All right, the first one we'll start with is Review Procedure in Public Hearing, six-six-point-three-four.
Do you want me to read it, Chris? You want to read it, or you want me to read it?
Thanks.
Review Procedure in Public Hearing. After the Planning Board determines that the application has been filed together with the submission of the Board, the Board needs to consider if the standards listed in six-point-six-point-three-point-seven can be complied with. The Planning Board shall hold a public hearing on the application within thirty days. The Board shall notify the Code Enforcement Officer and municipal officers and shall publish notice of time, place, and subject matter of the hearing at least seven days in advance on the town website and in newspaper of general circulation. They are, the Board is proposing to strike the ten days in order to meet, um, so that they can make it for the next meeting. Right now, the, this sometimes prohibits, um, a speedier process. So they're just trying to make it so that things can move along faster for applicants.
Any comments or questions about this? All right, moving forward. Number two would be six-six-point-three-point-two, Existing Conditional Use or Structure.
All right, um, a conditional use which existed prior to the effective date of this ordinance may not be changed to another conditional use, nor substantially expanded or altered in conformity with all regulations of this ordinance pertaining to conditional uses. Substantial expansions shall be defined as a use increase in area of twenty-five percent or more, new materials or process, processes not previously associated with the existing use. No changes shall be made in any approved conditional use without approve, approval of the change by the Planning Board. Whenever a parcel or tract of land subject to a conditional use permit changes ownership or leaseholder, the new operator shall review the conditions with the Code Enforcement Officer. The new operator will provide a certificate of insurance citing the town of Acton and renewal of any surety pertaining to the project. Um, so, they added the word "use," um, and then this was just, they added, um, for the fact that if land, like, land cha, in our ordinance, if, um, land changes hands, it doesn't state anywhere where the applicant needs to review their conditions. If somebody, um, I don't know, buys a restaurant or something like that, or, or any other entity party of some sort, um, they're just asking them to come in and make sure that they verify what the uses are, what they're allowed to do on that property prior to, you know, getting up and running. As well as renewal of any surety pertaining to that project. If that project, uh, required a, a surety bond for, for some reason, they want to make sure that, um, it is provided to the town before they are up and running.
So my name's Richard Nass, I live on Milk Mills Road. So what, does that mean that somebody that's got a conditional use permit does not need to come get approval from the Planning Board to change it?
To change?
Change.
I guess I don't.
Okay, I'm sorry, let's say change of ownership. Does not require somebody with.
Not right now.
Or doesn't require it now?
Right now, it does not.
Then that's not going to change. So they need to just come to see you, the Code Officer?
Yeah.
And review what the conditions are?
Yeah, just review the conditions and provide a proof of surety.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, moving forward. Number three, review, review the proposed amendment relative to solar energy systems.
Oh, this is going to take a long time.
I can, I can help.
Hey, there we go.
Excuse me. Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to solar energy systems. Um, the shaded strike-through indicates the wording was removed, the underlaid indicates the wording added, asterisks indicate wording omitted before or after the warrant clarity. Two-point-seven land use chart. Any use not listed herein is prohibited. Uh, conditional use review is C, LPI, Licensed Plumbing Inspector, N, not permitted, use not allowed, P, permitted. Use allowed with a permit must comply with all applicable land use standards. R equals CEO review, use must be reviewed by CEO and a permit may be required. S is site plan review, SD subdivision review, NA not applicable. Uh, I don't really know how to read the chart there, there's a... Yeah, no changes in that. So, E, renewable energy installed on an existing structure, non-solar, um, is added. F, renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure, non-solar, is added. Solar energy system accessory is added. Uh, the footnotes, um, reserved is scratched. Accessory solar energy systems generally require CEO review, except that site plan review is required for ground mounting systems that are accessory to the uses other than a single and two-family dwellings. C five-two-nine, two C, and D. Article three, construction of language and definitions. Um, sludge, solar energy system, a devise, device or structural design feature for which the primary purpose is to harvest energy by transforming solar energy into another form of energy, or transferring heat from a collector to another medium using mechanical, electrical, or chemical means. Solar energy system accessory, a solar energy system generating power for onsite consumption to offset electrical use for onsite accounts shall be considered accessory to the principal use when it is incidental and subordinate to the principal use or structure and located in the same lot. Excess energy may be fed back to public, to the public utility. Solar farm large, a solar energy system roof or ground-mounted photovoltaic, photovoltaic array which generates electricity for off-site accounts and has an array area including panel area and inter-panel space of two acres or more. Solar farm small, a solar energy system roof or ground-mounted photovoltaic array which generates electricity for off-site accounts and has an array area including the panel area and inter-panel space smaller than two acres. So solar energy systems, five-point-two-nine. Solar energy systems must obtain all applicable permits from the Acton Code Enforcement Officer and the State of Maine. Five-point-two-nine, the solar energy systems generating power for onsite consumption shall be considered accessory to the principal use. A, solar energy systems accessory shall be permitted wherever accessory use is our permitted and shall conform to the standards of the applicable districts. B, the maximum height of the roof-mounted accessory solar energy generated, generation system shall be the maximum building height set forth in the applicable zoning districts. The maximum height of the ground-mounted accessory solar energy generation system shall be twenty-five feet, measured from the lowest grade attachment point to the highest point of the facility, when oriented at the maximum tilt. C, ground-mounted accessory solar energy generation system accessory to uses other than single and two-family dwellings are subject to site plan review. Ground-mounted accessory solar energy generation is not allowed in shoreland, littoralcy, and resource protection zones. Five-point-two-nine-point-two. Solar energy systems generating power for off-site consumption shall not be considered an accessory use, are subject to the site plan review, and shall conform to the standards for, of solar farm medium or solar farm large as listed below. Application requirements, the outside agency permitting, one, the outside agency permitting must be completed prior to application submission. Two, a fully executed and signed copy of the application for site plan review. The application will be provided by the land use department.
Jesus.
Excuse me, could we, could we not have other conversations going on at the same time? Thank you.
Three, name the owner and operator of the facility and the names of the owner of the property. Four, cover lever to describing the project with details, the size and location of the proposed systems and the subject property. Five, plans, including the location of the proposed system, identifying the location of the facility on the property and the physical dimensions of the system and the property. Location of any public road, private road, or right-of-way that is contiguous with the property. Location of overhead utility lines. Six, a decommissioning plan for the removal of the solar farm and stabilization of the site at the end of the useful life of the solar photovoltaic technology. A decommissioning plan shall include details how the owner or operator of the record of the solar farm will insu, ensure completion of the following tasks. A, physical removal of all solar energy generation system components, including solar collectors, mounting hardware, electricity storage equipment, transmissions, and distribution lines and related infrastructure, structures, foundations, supports, fencing, and security barriers from the site. B, disposal of all solid and hazardous waste in accordance with the local and state, state and federal waste disposal laws and rules. C, revegetation and stabilization of the site as necessary to minimize erosion and return the site to substantially its pre-construction state. Native pollinator-friendly seed mixtures shall be used to revegetate areas to the greatest extent practicable. Seven, the following submission requirements apply to applications for large and small solar farms. A, written documentation from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission regarding any known or likely historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources located in or on the subject property within a hundred circumscribed perimeter of the, uh, hundred-foot circumscribed perimeter, phew, of the proposed solar facilities. B, written documentation from the Maine Natural Areas Program regarding the presence of rare or exemplary natural communities located on the subject property. C, written documentation from the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife regarding known locations of rare endangered or threatened species inhabitants, habitats. D, for solar farms that trigger review by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, the application shall provide a copy to the site law application submitted to the MDEP and any permits granted. E, standards, minimum lot side five, five acre minimum. Maximum developed, two, maximum developed area, area of disturbance per solar farm, twenty acres. Three, maximum height for ground-mounted solar facilities, twenty-five feet, measured from the lowest grade attachment point to the highest point of the facility, when oriented at maximum tilt. Four, minimum setback, front side and rear, seventy-five feet. Minimum road frontage, fifty feet. A sign shall be required. Six, a sign shall be required to be installed on the property to identify the owner and provide a twenty-four-hour emergency contact phone number. Seven, all electrical and control equipment for the ground-mounted solar farm shall be labeled and secured to prevent unauthorized access. Eight, solar farms must maintain a fifty-foot wide, a fifty-foot wooded butter, buffer on the property's front side and rear lot lines. The Planning Board may require additional plantings to create a naturalized vegetated buffer. Nine, the applicant or owner of the large or small solar farm is required to submit grid operator records to the Acton Code Enforcement Officer every six months to demonstrate that the solar farm is producing energy for off-site production. Decommissioning and removal of the solar farm is required after six consecutive months of no energy generation. The owner of the property shall remove the system in its entirety no later than twelve months after the end of the six-month period of no energy generation. Ten, removal surety required for all solar farms. Upon site plan approval and prior to the planning for any applicable building permits for solar farm, the applicant shall submit to the town a surety in the form of a bond to be approved by the Planning Board in the amount of a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the estimated removal cost as determined by the Planning Board. If engineering assistance is required for determining the removal cost, this expense will be responsibility of the applicant. Such costs will account for physical removal of all structures, systems, equipment, security barriers, and electrical lines, disposal of all solid and hazardous waste, and stabilization or revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion. The surety shall be kept in effect through the lifetime of the system, and the amount of the financial surety will be reviewed by the Planning Board or designated every ten years and renewed or adjusted as necessary. At the end, end of the decommissioning, provided the site has been fully reclaimed according to the state guidelines as enforced by the Code Enforcement Officer, the surety will be returned. Number eleven, large and small solar farms shall be located outside any portion of a property within the shoreland, littoralcy, and resource protection districts. Number twelve, solar farms must be sited on land with less than a fifty percent slope. Thirteen, all solar farms must meet the standards of DEP Chapter 500 rules for stormwater management and must show that post-development stormwater conditions will not increase the flow above pre-developed conditions.
Let's go.
Any questions or comments on the solar?
Just a little confused by, and it's the first time I'm reading this, so, um, when you're talking about the height of solar panels, and, uh, I'm, I'm not even sure where it is in this anymore. You have a two-story house, you want to put solar panels on it. Your two-story house is probably...
Ground-mounted is what they're talking about.
That's just ground.
Yeah.
Did that say that?
Uh, that is under the s...
Goes according to size, and it goes according to where it's at.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It goes according to size.
Yeah.
Large or small.
Yeah.
And where it's mounted.
Twenty-five feet measured from the lowest grade attachment, this is for ground-mounted.
But this is only for ground-mounted?
Only for ground-mounted, it has nothing to do with on a structures, on a, on a roof or structure.
Fine. And the other one I'm just questioning is, um, down, starting at number ten, uh, understand it's E, a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the estimated removal cost. And, um, then it talks about the, the Planning Board will determine what's that going to be? Or if it needs to be changed. I would, if I were doing the Planning, if I were doing the solar farm, I'd want to know, where are you getting your information? I don't see anybody here who is knowledgeable in that field. So for, you know...
I think they're supposed to provide, the Board was, intentions was for the applicant to provide, uh, the information.
Okay, but it doesn't say that there.
It says, if engineering assistance is required for determining the removal cost, the expense for, for getting that advice will be borne by the applicant.
By the applicant, okay.
Says we'll go out and get professional help.
All right, because, um, you know, back to the other one. Okay, very good, that does cover it, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close that part. All right, next up is five-point-nine-point-two, mineral extractive industry.
I can, I can go again if you want, if you want to do just the changes?
Um, you guys want to hear the whole thing, or just the changes, or how do you guys want to do it?
Any input from the audience?
I'll read the whole thing.
All right.
All right, five-point-nine-point-two, mineral extractive industry. A, permit required. Topsoil, rock, ledge, sand, gravel, and similar earth materials may be removed from locations where, where permitted. Only after a conditional use permit for such operations has been issued by the Planning Board in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. One, exception, the removal or transfer of less than one thousand cubic yards of material from or onto any lot in a twelve, twelve-month period as permitted in the land use chart. B, earth-moving not requiring a conditional use permit. The following earth-moving activities shall be allowed without a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. One, the removal or transfer of materials incidental to construction, alteration, or repair of a building, or in the grading and landscaping incidental thereto. Two, the removal or transfer of materials incidental to construction, alteration, or repair of a public or private way or essential service. Three, agricultural tillage. Note, all other earth-moving processing and storage shall require a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. C is submission requirements. All, um, excuse me, applications to the Planning Board for conditional use permit for the excavation, screening, or storage of soil, including topsoil, peat, loom, sand, gravel, rock, or other mineral deposits, shall be accompanied by eight copies of a, of a plan prepared by the professional land surveyor, registered engineer, or certified geologist. According to the Planning Board specifications, performance standards herein in compliance with applicable state laws and, and accompanied by all required state permits and licenses. Two, the applicant shall submit to the Planning Board evidence of right title or interest in the property to include the name and address of the owners of the property involved in the York County Registry of Deeds, of deeds, excuse me, book page number for the property. Plans of the proposed extraction site showing the property lines and names of abutting owners and ways indicating by not greater than five-foot contour intervals related to U.S. GeoTech, whatever, Geotectics Survey data, the location and slope of the grades existing and as proposed upon completion of the extraction operation. Detailing proposed fencing, buffer strips, signs, lighting, parking, and loading areas, buildings, permanent and temporary, entrances, entrances and exits, together with a written statement of restoration of the site upon completion of the operation. Three, the proposed maximum extent of excavation, excavation five acres or larger in size must include a Maine Department of Environmental Protection gravel pit identification number for existing and proposed subsurf, uh, surface water runoff including all drainage ways. Five, at least one monitoring well will be required per five acres within the extraction areas. Six, operational plans will include, one, access roads, access roads, construction and maintenance. Two, description of operations, processing and removal methodology. Three, erosion and sedimentation control. Four, reclamation plan. Seven, a letter from the Active Fire Department stating that they will be able to provide emergency services to the property. Eight, the following submission requirements apply to applications for mineral extractive industry. A, a written documentation from the Maine Historical Preservation Commission, MHPC, regarding any known or likely historic, prehistoric, or archaeological resources located in or on the subject property. B, written documentation from the Maine Natural Areas Program, MNAP, regarding the presence of rare or exemplary natural, uh, communities located on the subject property. C, written documentation for the main, from the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, MDIFW, regarding known locations of rare endangered or threatened species and habitats. D, entrance permit from the Department of Transportation if required. Nine, any applicable Maine Department of Environmental Protection permits. D, performance standards. No part of any extraction operation, including drainage and runoff control features, shall be permitted within the shoreland or resource protection districts. One, no part of any extraction operation shall be permitted within one hundred feet of any property or street line, except the drainage ways to reduce runoff into or from the extraction area may be allowed up to fifty feet of such line. Natural vegetation shall be left and maintained on the undisturbed land. Two, if any standing water accumulates, the site must be fenced in a manner adequate to keep children out. Measures shall be taken to prevent or halt the breeding of harmful insects. Three, before commencing removal of any earth materials, the owner or operator, operator of the extraction site shall present evidence to the Planning Board of adequate insurance against liability arising from the, from the proposed extraction operation, and such insurance shall be maintained throughout the period of operation. The insurance company must be licensed by the State of Maine as qualified to provide such insurance. Four, topsoil and loom shall be retained on-site to cover all disturbed land areas, which shall be reseeded and stabilized with vegetation native to the area. Additional topsoil or loom shall be obtained from, from off-site sources if necessary to complete the stabilization project. Any topsoil and subsoil suitable for purposes of vegetation shall, to the extent required for restoration, be stripped from the location of extraction operations and stockpiled for the use in restoring the location after extraction oper, extraction operations have seized. Such stockpiles shall be protected from erosion. Five, the hours of operation of any extraction site shall be limited as the Planning Board deems advisable to ensure operational compatibility with residents of the town. There shall be no crushing or screening on Saturdays and Sundays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, nor on the Fourth of July. Six, all access egress roads leading to and from the extraction site to, to public ways shall be treated with suitable materials to reduce dust and mud from the distance, from a distance of at least one hundred feet from such public ways. The applicant shall employ a Maine Department of Environmental Protection best management practices for the control of fugitive emissions, dust, as approved by the Planning Board. A plan shall be in place to adequately remove any mud or debris from the extraction site which accumulates on any public or private roads. Seven, no equipment, debris, junk, or other material shall be permitted on the extraction site except those directly related to activity, active extraction operations, and any temporary shelters or temporary buildings erected for operations and, operations and equipment used in connection therewith shall be removed within thirty days following completion of active extraction operations. Eight, within twelve months of the completion of extraction operations at any extraction site, which the, which operations shall be deemed complete when less than one hundred cubic yards of material are removed in any consecutive twelve-month period on any one road or more locations within any extraction site, ground levels and grades shall be established in accordance with the following. A, all debris, stumps, boulders, and similar materials shall be removed for disposal in an approved location or shall be buried on-site. Only materials generated on-site may be buried on-site. B, storm drainage and water courses shall leave the location at the original natural drainage points and in a manner such that the amount of drainage at any point is not significantly increased. C, the final grade slope shall be two and one-half, two-point-five to one, hope horizontal to vertical or flatter. D, in keeping with the purpose of this ordinance, the Planning Board may impose such conditions as, as are necessary to minimize the, the adverse impacts associated with mineral extraction operations on surrounding uses and resources. Nine, veget, natural vegetation shall be retained within one hundred feet of the property line or street line. The Planning Board may require the applicant to provide screening, a berm, or a combination where the natural buffer is inadequate. A twenty-five-foot natural buffer will be maintained from any wetland of one-quarter acre to two acres, as determined by a credential, credentialed professional. The applicant, ten, the applicant shall submit an erosion and sedimentation control plan using best management practices for erosion and sedimentation control as approved by the Planning Board to ensure that sediment does not leave the property to enter natural resources. Eleven, at least one monitoring, monitoring well will, at least one monitoring well on each five acres of unreclaimed land to demonstrate the depth from excavation to the seasonal high-water table. Monitoring wells shall be checked annually by professional licensed surveyor, registered engineer, or certified geologist between April first and May thirty-first, and a report shall be submitted to the Code Enforcement Office within seven days of measurement stating distance between the excavation and water table. Twelve, a stormwater management plan shall be submitted as approved by the Department of Environmental Protection for all operation areas of, of the site that are not internally drained. Thirteen, biannually, within one month of the anniversary date of the approval of conditional use, the owner... owner slash operator must send the code enforcement office, office a letter detailing the amount of open acreage. The letter will be based on a licensed surveyor, GPS programming, or equivalent technology. 14. The maximum open unvegetated, vegetated area, including yards for processing and material storage, is 35 acres. Permit approval. E. Permit approval. One. All plans and supporting materials shall be submitted to the planning board for their consideration with respect to the effect of the proposed operation upon existing and foreseeable traffic patterns within the town. Upon existing or, upon exiting or approved land, approved lands, land uses which may be affected by the operation and implementation of comprehensive plan policies. The planning board may obtain the technical assistance of a Soil Conservation Service, Regional Planning Commission, Department of Environmental Protection, or a consulting engineer in the review of the plans at the expense of the applicant. Two. The planning board shall hold a public hearing on the application. The planning board shall make the findings of the facts and render a written decision specifying whether and under what conditions the proposed operation shall be permitted. The planning board shall require filing with the town treasurer, a commercial charity bond, a certified check, or a savings account passbook payable to the town of Acton in such amount. And upon such conditions, as the planning board may be, may determine, to be adequate to identify, to indemnify the town against any claims arising from the proposed operation, and to assure satisfactory performance of all conditions imposed or otherwise applicable. All permits granted under this section shall expire after three years unless the applicant meets the following conditions. In the calendar year after the permit is granted, and every three years thereafter, the owner operator shall schedule an inspection with the town code enforcement officer between April 1st and November 1st. B. Within 30 days of the inspection, the town code enforcement officers shall notify the owner operator in writing of the inspection results, including any violations and required remedial actions. C. Failure to comply with the remedial actions required by the code enforcement officer report within 90 days from the, the date thereof will result in a stop work order until the remedial actions had been completed, including payment of all fees and penalties. If the owner operator does not comply within one year of the date of the code enforcement officer's report, the conditional use permit may be revoked or modified after review of the discretion, after, after review and at the discretion of the planning board. D. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit inspections by the town code enforcement officer as necessary to ensure compliance. E. Owner slash operator will provide compliance verification with all other outside agencies, state and federal, within 90 days of the issuance. Four. Exists, existing operations, any operation involving excavation, processing, or storage of soil, earth, loom, gravel, rock, or other mineral deposits in lawful operation at the time of this ordinance becomes effective, may continue to operate. Such existing approval, approved operations will schedule within one year and effective, one year of the effective date of this ordinance, and every three years thereafter, an inspection outlined above by the code office.
All right, we'll open up for a discussion or comments. Anyone come up to state a name and comment?
My name is Richard Nass, I live on the Milton Mills Road. So on page three at the top, item four, topsoil. Do we have a definition of topsoil in the ordinance? Yes?
I think so, I hope so.
Where I'm going with this is, is a lot of sludge out there. We're shipping it to Canada. What's to prohibit somebody from, on the cheap, or whatever, moving that into a site and using that, calling that topsoil? That could be a disaster for some, for the town. So it's the whole PFAS stuff, I, and I don't want to bring another problem in here, but...
There's not a definition for topsoil.
There's not?
There's a definition for sludge, though.
Oh. So you could move that definition right into this description. Anyway, thank you.
Was that in the added section, or was that just in the ordinance itself you were talking about?
That's item four, where it talks about topsoil, immediate removal of topsoil.
Okay, so...
Non-cycle removal.
Yeah, but that's existing already, so...
It's not so...
It's not a change.
There's a change in the...
Inside there, yeah. I see what you're, what you're saying, I was just saying it was nothing the, the planning board added this time.
Scott Stanton, County Road. I'm not understanding the, the last page, page five, number four, when it talks about existing operations. It seems like that's in conflict with what you talked about earlier with the existing conditional use permits, that there wouldn't be changes to it. It seems like that's a change.
It's not a change, it's just, I'll take a shot, you guys jump in. It, what it is, is imposing the inspection on you, on the terms and conditions that are existing. You know, if this is passed and gets into the ordinance, it's having you get into the inspection routine like all of you guys. But the inspection would be against your existing conditional use.
So...
In other words, it's not going to go back and make you comply with, you know, pick a, pick a new thing that's been inserted.
So it's just to make sure that you're complying with the original conditions of your use? Okay.
Hi, Matt Pepin. I also think, in relation to what he said, that the language that's in here really isn't too explicit about grandfathering. It's very vague. For example, it doesn't say that gravel pits that have already been approved would be grandfathered to the, the new wetland standards that you have in here. And I think that the language needs to be a lot more clear, because if, if in years to come, somebody read that, it would, it would be very confusing as to who's grandfathered and who's not. So I think that that language definitely needs to be clarified better. That's certainly concerning. I did submit a few other concerns to Jason via email, I could go over it quickly. One thing that I was concerned about is that, it says that failure to comply within 90 days will result in a stop work order. I think that needs to be thought about more closely, because if you have a gravel pit owner who maybe went a little bit over acreage, say he was approved for 10 acres and he has 11 acres open, it might take that operator about a year to reclaim something, as in get the grass growing and get that 95% vegetative standard that the state of Maine looks for. So 90 days just really wouldn't do it, you know, for, in, in the case of, of reclamation.
So complying can be intent to, you know, a letter of intent to comply, or remedial, a plan with the, with the office saying, okay, this is what we're doing. We obviously know that you're not going to get it, everything back in 90 days, but, you know, you have to, you have to acknowledge that you, that something's wrong, and how, how are you going to fix it, you know? Having a plan set aside would be complying.
I think that sounds good, but...
And that word comply, I think, really spells that out for you.
So it would be at the discretion of the code enforcement officer to develop a plan with you for...
Well, no, you would, I would come, so where I'm the code officer, I guess, I'd come with you to, with your violation. And we would sit down and figure out a way to remedy the situation. If that, if you were hesitant to do that, then you're not complying, or you're not willing to comply. And that was where the rest of that, that paragraph or, or statement would come in, 90 days. If you're not going to comply with, with the ordinance or the conditions, then you'll get a stop work order.
I, I think that perhaps the language needs to be just thought about that a little bit more closely, because when I read compliance, I just read that you have to be, you have to have, you have to have the problem resolved in 90 days, and there's no gray areas there. So I, I agree with...
I, I see what you're saying.
I agree with what you're saying, but I think that the language needs to be considered more strongly, so that maybe it does give the operator a little bit of flexibility to work with the town on issues, you know, rather than...
I think that's the intent.
It's not, yeah.
One of my other concerns was that the use, the need for stormwater management plans for portions of the gravel pit, it seems like that might be applicable if, in the case of our gravel pit, we had one area that we wanted to use just for processing materials, and that wasn't going to be part of the active pit. So it made sense there, but I think that if you have a, a building which is considered an accessory use to a gravel pit, or if you have like, you know, like a middle, little maintenance garage, or you have haul roads, that it would really be above and beyond to require a stormwater permit with a DEP for those sort of things, because that's a very, very expensive permit. And I think there just needs to be a little bit more clarity about where the, where a actual full-blown stormwater permit would be required versus not required. I think it's kind of crazy to do it for, like I said, a small little maintenance garage, but, you know, if you're talking about something bigger, then you should certainly consider it. And one other point of conversation was that, the installation of wells on-site. So it's not clear whether that would be requiring the operator to put in PVC wells, or like a, a well casing. Well casing is very, very expensive, you're looking at probably at least $6,000 or $7,000 per well. And if it's every five acres, that's really, that really adds up. So I hope you're considering a PVC, you know, monitoring method. And I know that you're interested in having a third-party, you know, measure the water levels every year, I guess in the spring. So you'd probably want to confirm with a third-party engineer that they can actually measure water levels using PVC pipes. I, I think they can, but that'd be something to look into. And I think you really should look at the DEP standards as well, and understand what the state requirements are already, like what state requirements are already in place, because DEP says every five acres, you're required to dig test pits to verify that you're at least five feet above the water table. So there are already some state standards that are in place when it comes to this that the town can use, without having to kind of overlap. So I think it's really worth considering what the state's opinion is on all that. Those are really kind of my bigger concerns. I, I personally don't love the additional offsets from wetlands, because the town of Acton is already super strict when it comes to wetlands. We've got some of the strictest standards in all of York County, I would imagine. We have the resource protection districts established, which say if you have over a 10-acre wetland, it's a 250-foot offset. And when they put that rule into place, that was really, really detrimental for a lot of people in Acton, a lot of businesses and a lot of homeowners, who lost a lot of valuable land. And Acton has some real strict rules when it comes to wetlands already, and I just don't see the need to make them any stricter. And those are my comments. Thank you.
James Getridge, West Shore Drive. So I just want to ask a question, he already asked it kind of, but I just want to verify what you were saying. So if you have a pit that's 40, 50 years old, the conditional use, there's no list of rules that you guys have already in place, so once we have to fall, you know, once we have to apply for him, or tell him to come out and inspect our pit, he's following rules that he doesn't know. Is that allowable? You're saying he has, we have to follow the new rules?
No, it's existing rules.
The existing rules of when the pit was permitted originally, in whatever, 1950. So essentially, there's, essentially, he's, he's, he's inspecting rules he doesn't know. Is that correct or no? If there isn't any. I'm just asking, is that possible?
Yeah, I guess it could be if he has nothing on file.
Okay.
His pit, I couldn't find anything in our filing system.
That's what I just wanted to ask.
He's going with that, and that's why he's saying what he's saying, because we searched, and I think we even searched York County Registry of Deeds, too. And I couldn't find anything for, anything for his existing pit.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the comments for that.
That's it?
Yeah. All right, we'll close down the public hearing for tonight. Thank you all for coming out.
Well, they're not really doing that much.
I just got away for a motion.
Not changing that much.
John, you're on.
Oh, I missed a jam and I moved you to general.
Second?
On paper? Thank you.